Good morning, everyone. We are live and we are unmuted. Thank you. Attend in order, please. Please be seated.
Good morning. This is S1SC 39742, State of New Mexico versus Board of County Commissioners for Lee County at all. Can I have entries of appearance, please? Thank you. Looking at what has been presented to me this morning, Mr. General, you have elected 10 minutes for your opening and reserved five minutes for rebuttal and have agreed to share five minutes with Ms. Gallegos. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then for the respondents, I have Mr. Lucky at eight minutes, Ms. Chacon at six, and Ms. Holly at six. Is that correct?
We have revised that. You see that information before we allow us to... We're gonna... If we allow us to...
Mm-hmm.
Holly will have eight minutes and Ms. Chacon not at least six.
Have you... Has that been communicated to the clerks?
I believe it has.
So Mr. Lucky would be at six minutes? Ms. Chacon at six minutes and Ms. Holly at eight? In... In that order? All right. All right. Mr. General.
Madam Chief, Chief Justice, may I please the Court. Women in every community in the state of New Mexico have a constitutional right to access reproductive health care. And today, on the 100th anniversary of the introduction of the Equal Rights Amendment in the United States House of Representatives, they are looking to this court for reassurance that when they exercise that right, they are entitled to equal treatment under the law. To provide that...
Mr. Torres, may I suggest to you that this case is not about the constitutional right to abortion, whether or not the state constitution provides for an abortion as a matter of constitutional right. And frankly, the briefing on that is less than persuasive, at least in my mind. I think the stronger argument you have is whether or not these ordinances violate Article 10, Section 6. Now, you can argue anything you want, but to me, that's the strongest argument you have. And I would like to hear something about that.
Certainly, Your Honor. The Court is absolutely correct. There are two grounds that the Court can grant the state's petition for writ of mandamus. Certainly, we've laid out for the Court a strong basis that the local ordinances at issue in this case are preempted by state law. As a matter of explaining the context, it's important for the Court to be aware that when the state initially filed its petition for an emergency writ, the legislature had not yet passed House Bill 7. Nevertheless, it was our position even then, in January, that there was a comprehensive and exhaustive state regulatory scheme that occupied the field of medical licensure and that the local communities and the respondents in this case had contravened a general law, actually, a series of general laws, the Medical Practice Act, the Malpractice Act, the licensure requirements for physicians, for nurses, a scheme that had been developed over many years and evinced in that construction that they intended to occupy that entire field. The enactment of these ordinances is clearly preempted by the state's decision to foreclose to local governments the opportunity to set independent licensing requirements for physicians or types of medical procedures in their jurisdictions. This court has ruled repeatedly in Protection Advocacy versus Albuquerque, ACLU versus City of Albuquerque, that when there is an exhaustive and comprehensive scheme that has been established by state action, that local governments cannot expand their power beyond what they are granted...
What about HB7? HB7 explicitly, to me, in my mind, is really your strongest argument here. I don't know how much more clear it can be.
Justice Moore, I would absolutely agree with you that that there is both a historical background to reach the conclusion, as Justice V. Hill articulated, that the actions of respondents in this case are simply preempted. But to your point, the passage of House Bill 7 and explicit references not to foreclose to local governments the opportunity to pass any local ordinance or law that would impede access to reproductive health care is a clear indication that that opportunity has been foreclosed to respondents.
The respondents seem to argue that we're gonna check your pre-state preemption with the federal preemption on this Comstock Act. You agree that if the Comstock Act does not apply in this circumstance, that their federal preemption argument goes away? And if so, how?
Your Honor, Justice Thompson, the first point I would make, and I think it will come up repeatedly throughout the argument today, that this court can reach this conclusion on adequate and independent state law grounds, that the Court should not take up respondent's invitation to opine as to the full extent of the Comstock Act. It simply has no application here. And by trying to trump the state's preemption argument with their own preemption argument about the powers that are divided between sovereign states and the United States government is a distraction.
My question's more narrow. Do you have any argument with regard to the application of the Comstock Act? In particular, and I'll ask this to respondents, this requirement that it be unlawful in the jurisdiction. Abortion is legal in New Mexico. That's a Comstock Act. If you can answer this question, apply at all. Assuming their argument, I know you don't want to apply, but assuming that...
The Comstock Act has no application in this context, in part because respondents have no authority to advance the interests that are exclusively reserved by the United States government. There is nothing within the Comstock Act that confers on them independent authority to even make that argument. And that's because these are subunits of the state itself. They are creatures and creations of the state, and they can only exercise that authority that has been conferred upon them. The federal government cannot, especially by the enactment of a criminal statute, confer authority on these municipalities that they don't already have and can't already exercise.
There's nothing in the language of the act that suggests that they are trying to do that. I mean, the federal Comstock Act, nowhere gives local governments the right to enforce it. Nowhere takes away the state's right to preempt local governments. Do you agree?
That's correct, Your Honor. And just some more, I think there's an important analogy that should be explored in this context. As this court is well aware, the state of New Mexico has, through legislative enactment, legalized the distribution and possession of cannabis. And you were also aware that there is a countervailing and contravening federal statute in effect right now under the United States Code that would make it illegal to distribute cannabis. If the Court were to buy this argument, you would open the door for jurisdictions who have decided that they don't want to allow and abide by the regulatory framework established by the legislature and hook into the federal criminal prohibition against the possession of cannabis and thereby undermine a comprehensive legislative scheme that has been laid out by the legislature and signed into law by the government.
And to be clear, this idea of the preemption between the state legislature and the local municipalities has nothing to do with the subject matter here today. It could be any variety of subjects that the legislature says, "You shall not do this." And whether it's a direct contravention or something that is more subtle makes, to me, I think, no difference. I was thinking about this in terms of if the state said that there can be no local laws interfering with driving gas-powered automobiles, and the local municipality passed an ordinance saying no shipment of gasoline, we would be having the same discussion about preemption based on gas-powered automobiles.
That's correct. And I think the point is well taken, that both the historical context that we had even before the passage of House Bill 7 and explicitly on the terms of House Bill 7 simply forecloses the opportunity for enactments of this type. I do, however, don't want to leave unattended the constitutional arguments for the Court, and I do think it's important for the Court to root itself in the comprehensive reasoning and analysis that was offered by Justice Minzner in 1998. This Court held at that time that New Mexico's Equal Rights Amendment is a specific prohibition that provides a legal remedy for the invidious consequences of the gender-based discrimination that prevailed under the common law and the civil law traditions that preceded it. If the Court were to, as I believe it should, follow the precedential effect of that reasoning and the structure of Justice Minzner's reasoning, there is no reason not to apply the same constitutional metric and standard to a more fundamental question, which is the foreclosure of access itself.
Mr. Torres, if I may, if I remember, the NARAL case, written by Justice Minzner, dealt with medically necessary abortion. Your argument is not limited to medically necessary abortion. It's just all abortion. So isn't that a distinction with a difference?
Respectfully, Your Honor, I would cast a broader net in terms of examining and articulating the question that was examined by Justice Minzner in that case. What she was actually digging into was the difference in funding mechanisms for...
Medically necessary procedures for men versus medically necessary procedures for women. This is not that case.
Yes, Your Honor, but her Equal Rights Amendment analysis was not predicated on a distinction about medical necessity. It was predicated on a differential funding mechanism. And it's the disparate treatment between men and women under that rubric that animated her conclusion.
Assuming we agree with you that HB7 preamps these local ordinances, we don't need to reach the constitutional issues, and generally, we don't reach constitutional issues unless absolutely necessary. Would you agree that we shouldn't be reaching that issue?
Justice, my time is up. May I proceed?
You may answer the question.
In general, yes. The Court is, at all times, able to reach a decision on a narrower basis and stop short of reaching that constitutional question. But it has always been the practice of this Court, when facing issues of constitutional questions of public concern that require expeditious resolution, that they at least consider whether or not the moment is appropriate to address that. I think in the wake of the Dobbs decision and the abandonment of the United States Supreme Court of 50 years of precedent that women in this country relied on, there is a great deal of uncertainty. In fact, I think it was that uncertainty that prompted the action of respondents here today. I think the Court would... Should at least consider whether or not there is an independent constitutional basis for announcing a basic proposition that women in this state have a constitutional right, under the Equal Rights Amendment, to access reproductive health care as a threshold. Of course, the Court can stop short, but as Justice V. Hill, in the opinion last year in Adobe Whitewater, there have been opportunities where there has been a previously articulated constitutional right, in that case, in Red River. The Court had identified that there was a right in the public to access public streams and rivers. What had not been decided in that case is whether or not that meant the ability to walk on stream beds and to access stream beds. That was an aspect of that constitutional right that had been previously addressed and announced by the Court. My sense is, is that if the Court is willing to take constitutional rights that had been previously developed but not fully fleshed out, that respectfully, this is a right that is due equal consideration. And if the Court is going to do that, there has to be a principled distinction about why it would do that in that instance, but not in this occasion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
May it please the Court. Chief Justice, my clients join the Attorney General in asking for a writ of mandamus, declaring that these challenged ordinances are preempted under state law, especially HB7, and also declaring them unconstitutional. Given the Attorney General's argument about unconstitutionality and why it's important at this point, I'd argue that those who attempt to limit access to women's health care have not and will not stop attempting to do so. And it necessitates this Court's explicit declaration of the fact that, in New Mexico, abortion is health care, and that health care is protected and safeguarded, not only by statutes in New Mexico, but also by the Constitution as outline.
But you have a statute, the validity of which, the constitutionality of which, gives you everything you want. And it's not being challenged as unconstitutional or otherwise challenged in any way. So why, to repeat Justice Samora's question, should we delve into this amorphous question of whether or not Constitution of New Mexico provides this independent constitutional right? If at all?
Yes, Your Honor. This Court absolutely can decide the petition based solely on preemption, either on field preemption and/or on HB7 specifically. The question and issues that the petition from the AG brings here weren't present for the Court in NARAL. When Justice Minzner wrote the NARAL decision, Roe was in place and had been since 1973. Roe is no longer in place, and that's why we have... We see all these attacks.
You could still... There's still an argument, I assume, you could make under a different provision of New Mexico's application of its privacy, rather, under the New Mexico Constitution, correct, even given Dobbs?
Correct. If this Court wanted to use due process and the inherent rights clause to find a fundamental right to abortion or the right to terminate a pregnancy, it very well could. There's nothing prohibiting this Court from doing that. And then, once it finds a fundamental right, that fundamental right would be subject to strict scrutiny, which would lead us to the same place either the Equal Rights Amendment does or the Equal Protection Clause. This right is so important that it can be found grounded in any of these three spaces under our Constitution. And now seems like a good time to explicitly say that. But of course, this Court absolutely can just find on the preemption issue. There's no requirement that this Court find the... Reach the constitutional issue, but there's also nothing prohibiting you from reaching the constitutional issue.
So the other side's arguments seem to be grounded on the Comstock Act. Will you respond to that in the brief time you have?
Sure. Yes, Justice Cora. These ordinances have nothing to do with the Comstock Act. What these local governments have done is taken language that exists in a federal statute, put it into their ordinances, and passed it as local law. Once they do that, it is local law, and there is no federal question about it. And the question becomes, the question we've been talking about this whole time, do local governments have the authority to regulate health care? And under both field preemption and HB7, the answer is simply no.
Follow-up question to the conversation you were having before Justice Samora's question, which is, for me, I'm trying to wrap my head around, if we were to find preemption here, what is the concern that you have about what would happen next? I've heard from both the Attorney General and from you, this parade of horribles is coming. What does that look like in the state of New Mexico if we find preemption here? We have the statute that emanates from House Bill 7, and we have otherwise law that is silent on restrictions on women's health care?
I would answer that NARAL answers this question. In NARAL, the question was, is it the violation of the Equal Rights Amendment when you have a group of similarly situated people? And here, our similarly situated people are people seeking health care in these jurisdictions. jurisdictions. But the problem is here, is what they've done, apart from preemption, is they've taken men on one side who seek and access care they need and want with only state regulations governing their healthcare. And then over here, you have the women in their jurisdictions seeking what they want.
I, I follow that. My question's slightly different, and I'm sure it's because I didn't articulate it particularly well. And yes, you'll be able to answer my question, even though we're over time. What is your client's concern that if we say there's preemption and we stop there, there, you know, I think part of the Attorney General's argument is this is basically capable of repetition in some other way. What, what avenue are you concerned about that would render this capable of repetition, even though it wouldn't be through the ordinances, should we find that there is preemption?
My client understands that this can be decided on preemption alone, and that is perfectly fine. We do join the Attorney General in asking you to consider the constitutional question because these attacks are not going to stop in various forms. And I-
And that's what I'm trying to get at. What, what are these other attacks that would be viable in the state of New Mexico? Because we're different than our neighboring states.
Sure. I think part of the issue here is, when you talk about preemption, we're talking about only local governments. But when we talk about you can't put restrictions on abortion without passing strict scrutiny, we're talking about all levels of government. So you foreclose more than you would with just preemption alone on the basis of what are local governments allowed to do, what does the state give them, and what are they allowed to do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
May please the Court, Jeff Lucky for Lee County. Counsel for the other respondents will address issues that I'm not going to cover, what I intend to cover in my short time. First, Lee County distinctives in terms of its ordinance, and also issues of mootness and rightness that appear problematic in this case, that may bear the court's attention and consideration in ruling. The, but before I do that, I would address on an authority basis that New Mexico law gives counties the authority to, to make act, to take action to protect health and welfare and the benefit that each county's inhabitants gives it to the board of commissioners, and that's at forty, at four dash thirty-seven dash one. I'll leave the rest of that argument to Mr. Chacon. But we do believe the authority was there, and as counsel's already pointed out, these acts, by each of these respondents, were done at a time when it was a void in the law.
But there isn't anymore. I mean, House Bill 7 is as, it's, it's pretty square. It's, it's on all fours in terms of telling your client and others, no, this, this is no longer in your purview, and we have to take the law as it's, it's presented to us today, as opposed to what it was in the moment in time that the ordinance was passed at this point. We can't disregard the legislature's action post hoc. And if you, if you think we can, I'd love to hear your legal authority for that.
And I would, I would agree that we, we're not asked, I'm not, Lee County's not asking the court to disregard HB7. And I would refer the court to our, our original response to the court's question on what's the significance of HB7. Our position is that because of the, the, the really convoluted chronology of these facts, which, when you overlay it against the ongoing litigation in federal court on, on the, on the Comstock Act, which I'll, I understand counsel's argument that you should focus on the state authority issue.
Where in the Comstock Act does it allow local authorities to enforce it?
Clearly, the Comstock Act does not have that language.
And where is there a private right of action in the Comstock Act?
I don't believe, we're not arguing that there is.
Okay. And so I'm wondering what, why the Comstock Act in any way would limit the power of the state to regulate local governments on this issue?
Um, I think, first of all, let's, may I address the state issue first?
You may.
The state issue simply is this. We've got a case where the, the local, the local authorities took action after Dobbs, and after some two years prior, the state legislature had eliminated all the law on abortion, as far as I can tell, and it not, and it stopped short of establishing in a black letter law affirmative right to abortion. I'm not, I don't believe abortion is illegal in New Mexico. Clearly, it's not. But the, the legislature stopped short. They even stopped short in HB7. The last part of HB7 are a bunch of no duty sections that stop short and make it clear that they're not going to require certain entities to do certain things in this context. So I think these things remain to be litigated. My, and our position primarily is this. The Comstock Act, the uncertainty about the Comstock Act is compounding the problem the court faces. But the primary problem we face is that HB7's never been litigated. None of these ordinances ever, to our knowledge, has ever been violated, if they have.
But they, they potentially, I think, have a, you know, the, the ordinances, as they exist today, potentially have a very chilling effect on any action that, that somebody might take in the state of New Mexico to provide the healthcare access that, that everyone's talking about today. So we have clinics in other states that have been shut down, and they're moving to New Mexico. And certainly, I think the ordinances and the application of, the unanswered question from your perspective of HB7, but the ordinances, have a chilling effect on one of those entities deciding to relocate in Lee County.
If, if the ordinance didn't have a chilling effect, it wouldn't be very worth arguing about. So I'm-
So, yeah, so that chilling effect is something that the court regularly and routinely addresses despite the fact that there has been no district court case, because that chilling effect then can have implication for the state as a whole.
In my very, Your Honor, with my very limited time, I would just close by saying that mootness, and there's a mootness issue, I think, because the FDA essentially said you can use methaprostone under our protocol in states where abortion is not illegal. So right now, there's, there's no issue, you know, our, you know, in that sense, issue joint. The other thing, there's really no case-
You're not suggesting we leave the ordinance in the books?
I'm, I am-
We believe that HB7 preempts it, and we believe in what the Justice Department has found its interpretation to be.
If Roe teaches anything, let's not hurry on issues of primary political importance. The court has a, has a right and a duty to, to judge this. And I think the best course for this court is to dismiss this case, not uphold any, any-
So abdicate our responsibility to interpret the law, which is not a political question, it's a legal question.
Your Honor, I believe that the appropriate form and means for this is a trial court declaratory judgment, which you would probably ultimately review, and all of the law that we're talking about starts at the district court, the DEC Act.
But the DEC action that's been filed, not by parties in, in this case, has been stayed because the judge says, I can't decide this without knowing what the Supreme Court is going to do. Eunice?
May I respond briefly?
Yeah.
I, I think the court would serve the interest of the people in New Mexico and the court by seeing this thing come through the normal course of things, so that the issues are fully developed. When you make your decision, you're well justified.
Chief, may I ask a question before we end? Mr. Lucky, one of the concerns I have about that argument is I, I'd really like you to talk and, about what would we get out of a trial? What information would, do you anticipate would be, excuse my voice, I'm sorry, would be developed out of a trial that would help us in some way that we're not seeing today?
I think there are clearly provisions in HB7 that, that fall, that stop short of, of making definitive law regarding abortion, medical standard of care and medical necessity issues that are specifically explicitly mentioned in, in, in that act. And, and if you, I think it's easy to see a scenario where, depending on what the Comstock Act outcome is in the Fifth Circuit, it-
But those are all legal interpretation questions as opposed to factual inquiry. The trial court is, is designed to elicit factual records that we then review, but everything you just laid out is a legal question, subject to legal interpretation. So I'm not sure that deferring to a district court in the first instance is measurably better than where we are.
I would just respectfully refer my, refer the court to the briefing on that issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacon.
May I begin?
Yes.
Good morning, justices. I, I'm prepared to argue issue number three as to whether the ordinance exceeds local governmental constitutional authority. Article 10, Section 60 of the New Mexico Constitution states that a municipality which adopts a charter may exercise all legislative power to perform all functions not expressly denied by general law or charter. The New Mexico Supreme Court, this court has previously held that home rural municipalities do not look to legislature for a grant of power to legislate-
Until the legislature has said no.
Exactly.
And don't, doesn't House, House Bill 7, isn't that an express statement by the legislature telling your client, the city of Hobbs, no?
Yes. And so, as of right now, I would respectfully say that our ordinances are not in violation of House Bill 7. And if, if you may, just bear with me one second.
Yeah, no, please, please explain that one to me.
Because, so our ordinances, they are business ordinances. And so, as, as home rural municipalities, we have the inherent right to create offices that regulate business. And that PDACA provides that at home rural-
The counsel, one of the things that the ordinance says on page three, under the purpose-
Which ordinance?
Uh, the, the, the Hobbs ordinance.
Yes.
Uh, city of Hobbs ordinance, I can't read, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, 1147 on page three, the purpose says, "The purpose of this section is to preserve the integrity of the local medical profession by ensuring compliance with applicable law." When General Torres argued, he talked about the reasons behind HB7, he talked about the Medical Malpractice Act, the licensure information regarding doctors, and the laws that govern all of those things. It seems to me that the purpose set out in ordinance 1147 seems to duplicate or try and, and, and cover that up, or it covers the same topics.
I, and I definitely understand that. But in the body of the ordinance, it simply asks that if there is a business, abortion business that comes into the city of Hobbs, that they do two things, that they follow both state and federal law, whatever's in place at the time. And at, at this time, it is U, eighteen U.S.C.A., fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two, and then local law, which is building regulations, fire codes, things of that sort.
But the-
And the ordinance. And, well, but the ordinance is just asking them to comply with federal, local, state, federal law.
HB7 subsection 3D says that it applies to any law ordinance that violates or conflicts with the Reproductive and Gender Affirming Healthcare Freedom Act. It doesn't say licensing laws. It doesn't say constitutional right laws. It doesn't say civil rights laws. It says any ordinance, any law.
And so-
Which means that your business law or your business licensing is part of that.
So, and then I would then say to this district that, yes, that, that is an issue as well, because, so for instance, because of this abortion issue, and if it were a different type of, of business we were trying to regulate.
Has the city of Hobbs currently, in the past or in the future, ever regulated a business license for a medical procedure for a male?
So not medical procedures, but we regulate business, oil, oil-
But the, the licensure overlay here is, is frankly, the argument is a ruse. It's designed to prevent any provider or clinic from offering reproductive healthcare unless your client says it is consistent with what we view to be, you know, a, a moral doctrine. And so by definition is interference. You can call it a business license all day long, but it's interfering with what HB7 is expressly saying you cannot do.
Respectfully, we don't, we do not believe so. We don't believe that it's restricting abortion in any, any, any type of way. We are simply saying-
But there's no business, there is no business in the city of Hobbs that can provide, that can operate a business that addresses termination of pregnancy. The ordinance very clearly says that that cannot happen.
It, so it says that follows state-
Which is interference. That's interference with, with the process.
And I definitely understand that, Justice Bacon. But, but what's important here to address, that we're addressing the business aspect of it, not the fact that the medical field of it. It's more of-
Is there a similar ordinance governing cannabis?
Yes.
So there are no business licenses in, in Lee, in Hobbs issued to cannabis dispensaries?
No, there is. And so we, we are okay issuing a business license to abortion clinics. We're not trying to ban abortion clinics whatsoever.
You're trying to ban their equipment and medication.
Simply, we are asking them to comply-
You're allowing them to open a four-walled building and do nothing.
No, because there's different avenues in which they can bring in their equipment. We're asking for them just not to-
What, what avenue would that, what avenue would that be? Please, I really, this is a new one to me. So what avenue would, we can't use the mail, we can't use carrier services.
And that's inter-commerce carrier services pursuant to the federal law.
So you want New Mexico to then build manufacturing facilities that produce methaprostone so that it's not coming from outside of the state? That would be the scenario that you're asking the court to agree with you on.
And if I may respond?
Yes, please. And then I know Justice Thompson has a question.
Yes. And so, we are not asking that. We are simply asking that if you are an abortion-
That's the system you've created, though.
I, I understand. So I understand if you are an abortion business, we are simply asking for them to abide by local, state, and federal law, whatever it may be, to abide by those, just like any other business within the city of Hobbs. It's not a ban, it's not a restriction, it's a business ordinance. Abide by all law and register your business.
But by whose definition?
By whose definition of what?
Of, of, of the Comstock Act. By whose definition?
By the federal statute. We, we quoted the federal statute in our ordinance. We simply said file, and we didn't add any additional language to our, in our ordinance. We, we said, this is what the, this is what the law is. And as in our ordinance, it's very clearly stated, we are only asking abortion clinics or abortion providers, businesses to abide by federal law and nothing more, and do their business license and nothing more. It simply followed state or local, state, and federal law, whatever it may be, and also register your business alike any other business. We are not against abortion at all. This is not an abort, and I understand as of right now, it's a political issue. That's not what we're here to do.
Why, why the title of the ordinance itself?
And I may say, and-
The ordinance belies that, the, the title of the ordinance, because that argument is presented in the briefing.
Understood.
The title itself reveals what the intent is by the local municipalities and counties.
And I understand that if, the way you feel that that's the, what the title shows, but the body-
My, my discussion with you, and you need to be very cautious here, Ms. Chacon, is not about how I feel.
Oh, I apologize, Justice. I apologize.
This is about the title of the ordinance. There's no dispute what the title is, correct?
Understood. Yes. And if I may, the body provides that we have the inherent right as a home municipality to govern businesses. And that's all we are trying to do. We are not trying to ban abortion.
Unless, unless regulation of the business operates to deny, restrict, or interfere with a person's ability to access or provide reproductive healthcare as defined in House Bill 7.
And if I may?
If it, if it restricts or interferes with that ability, it's unconstitutional under the New Mexico Constitution, correct?
If, if I may respond. So I believe House Bill 7 is very broad in that, because it's saying if it interferes indirectly or directly, we are looking at a plethora of things. We are a home municipality where we also regulate the fire code, the building code. So for instance, if there's an abortion clinic-
But House Bill 7 doesn't talk about the fire code.
It, but it talks about any ordinance established by a municipality. Our ordinances, we have a fire ordinance, we have a building ordinance. And if, at any point, there's an issue going-
Is there any other ordinance that deals with medical care and the licensing of medical professionals?
And so, it's not a licensing, where it's not a licensing, it's a business license to, to have a business within the city of Hobbs.
You can, you can have a, let's assume that premise. You can have a business license in Hobbs.
Yes.
Okay. But you have to apply them equally. Do you agree?
And we do.
Okay. This is my question. Has Hobbs currently regulate through a business license any, have they in the past, in the future, regulated medical treatment, a business license for medical treatment of a male?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hopps. Madam Chief Justice, and may it please the court. I wanted to just take a step back here to a 30,000-foot view and address the arguments made by the Attorney General and Demicki here. The Attorney General insists that this court should reach out and decide several constitutional issues. Under the Equal Rights Amendment, I also heard the due process and the privacy rights mentioned here. But of course, this case is in a mandamus posture. And mandamus is jurisdictionally barred here, we believe, for at least two separate reasons. First, this court has time and again insisted that mandamus is a drastic and extraordinary remedy that should only be exercised when a clear right exists at law. As this court has acknowledged in New Mexico, excuse me, in right to choose, the Equal Rights Amendment language is not clear, has to provide a right to abortion.
Ms. Holly, though, taking, I want to take that concept, but direct it towards preemption.
Sure.
There's nothing new about the law of preemption in the state of New Mexico, whether it's implicit or direct. And so we, you know, I, I understand the argument that's been made in the briefing that, you know, if we were to go down the, the path that the, the AG has suggested that we do and grapple with the constitutional question, we'd be doing something new. Not sure I agree with that, but set that, that aside. On preemption, we wouldn't be doing anything new. There's no surprise about the scope and contours of our preemption law in New Mexico. We would not be plowing any new ground. And if that's the case, and we view House Bill 7 as preempting the local ordinances, I think the argument you're making doesn't really fit that conversation, is that fair?
So I agree that, that the clear right to relief is, is stronger in the constitutional context. And we can talk more about that. But I think it also applies to the preemption argument for a couple of reasons. Again, in Purtle and in Exral Riddle, this court has been clear that there must be a clear right to relief. And of course, this flows out of the sort of historical posture of mandamus as being something to direct a nondiscretionary duty to an official, to cause that official to do something. Um, here, your honors, we are.
Prohibitory mandamus as well.
Absolutely.
Here, that's the path, that's the lane we're in as it relates to House Bill 7. The, the, as the argument goes, the Attorney General and Miki are saying, we, we want you to prohibit through mandamus the conduct of the local municipalities. And that, that universe, that body of law, isn't declaring something new. Purtle is, is really inapplicable to that constitutional argument.
So, so, but, but the right has to be clear, your honor, and so if we can look.
The right is established in House Bill 7.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
And if I could add to the chief's question, the contours of state preemption are at least 49 years old, going back to the Apodaca versus Wilson case. And that was in 1974. That's the, the base case, and, and nothing has changed since then. So we're not doing anything new. And if I interfered with your answering the chief's question, please finish, but I, I, we're not doing anything new here. And House Bill 7 does establish a clear, unambiguous statutory.
Sure, so just two quick things, your honor. So I think New Mexico is unique in the power that it accords to municipalities and localities. Of course, we have the home rule cities at issue here, as well as Section 437-1, that gives to counties the same rights. So this court's preemption jurisprudence that you are referencing requires that there be a clear conflict. And there's no question that the localities have the ability to regulate within the police power for health, welfare, and safety, which they are doing here. But then the question is, under this court's cases, is whether HB7 presents a direct conflict. I think there's a couple of questions that make that perhaps not so clear. One of them is if you look at Section 3 of HB7, it prohibits the, the interference with reproductive care, with, excuse me, what it calls reproductive healthcare, quote, "within the standard of care." Well, there's an argument to be made that something that violates federal law would not be within the standard of care. Again, that issue has not been addressed by, by any law report, but, but it's certainly something that could make the life, the right less than clear. Additionally, the ordinances.
I don't understand what you just said, that if it's within the medical standard of care, it cannot violate federal law.
So, no, no, your honor, my submission is that HB7 only preempts interference with healthcare that would be within the medical standard of care. There's an argument here that this healthcare is not, we would disagree with it being healthcare, but that this, these services are not within the medical standard of care.
It isn't the medical standard of care in, you know, all area, almost all areas of jurisprudence. It's established by medical experts, not by lawmakers. So if, if I have a, a medical malpractice case in front of me, I don't have legislators testifying to me as to what the medical standard of care is. I have medical professionals, not lawmakers, telling me what the medical standard of care is because it's developed through the medical community and best practices. And this, that, your argument kind of turns that upside down and says, elected officials are going to establish, whether it's federal or local, are going to say this is the medical standard of care. And I don't think that's how that's developed through history.
So Chief Justice Bacon, I acknowledge that in the lion's share of cases, certainly the medical standard of care would be developed through the medical profession, and you'd have the battle of experts and those sorts of things. But it can't be the case that the medical statute, the standard of care includes illegal medical procedures.
The, the, the medical procedure, the Comstock Act doesn't make the procedure itself illegal. So that, that kind of undercuts that, that argument. It'd be as, as if we were going to say, let's have Congress declare rhinoplasty illegal for, you know, just to take something completely different than what we're talking about today. And that's not about the medical standard of care in providing healthcare. So I don't think that medical standard of care matches the argument that you're, you're really trying to make here.
So I think all of these kind of difficult questions are, are reasons that maybe mandamus is not appropriate even on HB7.
How do you get past subsection D, which is dealing with no municipality or county can enact a law or ordinance that violates the provisions of the Act?
So I think the provisions of the Act that that's referring to is Section B, which does incorporate the reference to medical standards of care, your honor.
Well, it doesn't, subsection A has the phrase "medical standard of care," that's 2434-3. B has the phrase "medical standard of care," but subsection D does not have that, which is the phrase that Justice Zamora is referring to, that you, that "a, a public body or entity or individual acting on behalf of or, or within the scope of the authority of a public body shall not impose or continue in effect any law, ordinance, policy, or regulation that violates or conflicts with the statute." Standard medical care, standard of medical care is not in subsection D.
May I respond, your honor?
Yes.
Um, so again, I, I think my answer is the same as, as to Justice Zamora. If we look at this provision D, it's simply reiterating that localities cannot violate the statute, but that Section D is not setting forth statutory requirements or saying what a locality might do to violate it. Section D just says, "shall not impose any policy or regulation that violates or conflicts with these provisions." So the question is, what are these provisions? And we look to A and B for that determination, your honor.
I understand, thank you.
So, Justice Thompson.
All right, unfortunately, as a mode of appellate practice, you get the questions in the end because you're the last we're going to hear from. So my question is on the Comstock Act, and it sort of pales from the Chief Justice's. As I read the cases that have followed the Comstock Act, the adjective unlawful is attached to the Comstock Act. And it, these services are lawful in New Mexico. They're lawful, I don't think there's a dispute about that. So I'm struggling with, because your argument is, well, the local government gets to decide whether the Comstock Act applies, and we need to go through a trial and do all this in order to set the foundation of each one of these ordinances. Can you point to me an opinion that says, as the Chief Justice, I think, framed it, the Comstock Act makes unlawful what is lawful in New Mexico?
So yes, your honor, I believe the district court's decision from the Northern District of Texas and Alliance for Patriotic Medicine does hold that the Comstock law prohibits the mailing of chemical abortion drugs, even where those drugs would be lawful in a particular state.
Okay, so USV1 package and the series of cases that follow that, within what I guess is out of the Fifth Circuit, anything else? Or do you agree with me, there's a series of cases following USV1 package that conclude otherwise? And is there anything that exists outside of that Fifth Circuit? Or, I apologize.
Sure.
To be more specific, the, the trial court district.
Sure, um, so a couple of things, your honor. So you are sort of tracking the language of the OLC memorandum that interpreted the Comstock Act.
Well.
In part.
I'm tracking the citations to it.
Sure, sure.
Is what I'm tracking. And you're right, I read it, but I'm tracking the citations to it, like, go ahead.
So I think there are a couple of problems with OLC's analysis and with simply following those cases. The first one being is the plain text of the Comstock law. The Comstock Act prohibits the mailing of chemical abortion drugs. And then the next subsection, your honor, talks about knowingly. It would be passing strange to incorporate a, an intent requirement into a statute that already includes a knowing requirement. And to get more specific to your question about those cases, your honor, only one of them involves abortion at all, most of them involve contraceptions. And the case even goes on to talk about sort of the, the moral approbation at that time that was given to abortion, and, and talks about abortion only being lawful in cases wherein mother's life is at stake.
It also limits the distribution of pamphlets.
So, but there, there's another different issue with that. Absolutely, your honor, we'd agree with that on the First Amendment grounds. Um, but to follow up with that, your honor, in, in order to use those cases to defeat the clear text of the Comstock Act, I think you'd have to rely on what's called the prior enactment canon. And that's the idea, that a later Congress said, look, all of these courts have held this, so we're going to acknowledge that. But the problem, your honor, is that after all of these cases, Congress had a chance to include the word unlawful in the Comstock Act and chose not to. They rejected that amendment in, I believe it's 1978. Um, so I don't think those cases get you quite where you want to go. Thank you, your honor.
We're adjusting the clock. And it's cooperating. It says 4:51 on our clock. There we go. Thank you. Mr. General.
Your honor, I'd like to begin by coming back to a question that was asked by Justice V. Hill about whether or not it was necessary to address the constitutional dimensions presented in this particular case. And, and I think it was instructive, based on the question that was posed by Justice Thompson, when he specifically asked respondents if there had been any ordinance that had been passed in those jurisdictions that specifically attempted to regulate the healthcare available to men. And the answer definitively was no. And I think that that highlights one of the underlying elements of Justice Minzner's reasoning in NARAL, when she went through and definitively catalogued, on behalf of this court, a long history of discriminatory practice that had evolved and, and thankfully has fallen away over time. Prohibitions against voting, prohibitions against holding elected office, evolutions in how that, the adoption of the ERA impacted community property rights, even the criminal code, the exemption afforded under the marital rape exemption. And in conclusion, she reached, on behalf of this court, and I believe it's still controlling precedent, that any gender-based classification that operates to the disadvantage of women is presumptively unconstitutional. We concede that the court can dispose of these ordinances purely on the basis of a preemption order, either by the historical context or the explicit terms of House Bill 7. But I would caution the court to think broadly about the national context. Right now, in the state of Texas, there are women who are leaving.
The problem, the problem, Mr. General, is that there's been no argument on the other side. And we would be making a, a decision based upon one-sided, and I would submit incomplete briefing on the other side, because there's no challenge to House Bill 7 on the basis that it is unconstitutional made by the cities or the counties in this case. That is, they do not argue that there is a constitutional right to prohibit abortion.
Your honor, I, as I read respondents' briefs, it appears to me that there has been ample opportunity for them to explore the constitutional dimensions of the NARAL decision and other precedent affecting discriminatory behavior on the part of the government. One of the aspects of House Bill 7 that you should turn your attention to and grapple with is that it defines a public body in Section B as meaning a state or local government, an advisory board, a commission, an agency, or entity created by the Constitution of New Mexico. So we all agree that that, that the coverage afforded under House Bill 7 would cover state and local government and subunits of that government. What happens in the future, because we were effectively asked, your honor, Chief Justice, about a parade of horribles? We are not, right now, grappling with the ability of other jurisdictions in other states seeking access to medical records about the movement of women into and out of.
But those are in states where abortion's not legal, that's not the case here.
You, you're absolutely right, your honor, but what, what the, by taking up the constitutional dimensions in this state, you will afford women in this state a greater level of constitutional protection under our own constitution, a, a bulwark against the encroachment on their privacy rights and on their treatment by exploring the constitutional dimensions. If you don't do that at this moment, and you certainly could wait for the parade of horribles, I would submit that this is not going to stop. The question before the court is going to come back before the court. And really, the question is, what, what element from a legal standpoint, not from a factual standpoint, what is going to change? We have been debating this question in this country for the better part of 50 years.
Can you address?
Yes, your honor.
Can you address Ms. Holly's argument that it does not preempt areas, I understand it, of, of, that go beyond the standard of care?
So, um, that's not how I read that. I think what it does is actually opens the door to a moving target that can be adjusted and implemented by elected officials who don't, who are not grounded in, in, in an objective medical standard of care. And to the Chief Justice's point, under our regulatory scheme, that's why we don't allow local governments to start establishing for themselves, either by the city, the city manager or the county commissioner, what constitutes the standard of care. I see that I'm out of time. Thank you again, your honor.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your arguments today, and the court is taking the matter under advisement.